No, not necessarily. Even if it's a little bit more late. It's like one. You know, it's such a.
I would like to call to order the city of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, October the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I would ask for everyone to please stand for our invocation by Gina Spiker, who is the children's music minister at Mount Zion Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you through this day. We thank you, God, that we can pause for a minute just to rest in your peace. We thank you that you have given us safety and warmth and help. God, so many in our state are still suffering from the hurricane that came from boy. We pray for those people, God, and we pray for their governments that are helping them, their neighbors that are helping them. God, we pray, Father, for this meeting here tonight, Lord, that you would just guide the hands and the minds and the mouths and the things that are said. We pray for each city official that you would help them seek you, Lord, and be active in your own heart, God, and that you would preside over all things that is done this night. In your name, Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you please remain standing? We, uh, Councilman John Abernathy would like to have a special prayer for one of our employees. And, uh, I'll turn it over to John then.
Fine, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before your throne right now. We just lift up our employee, Mr. Kent Ballard. Father, as he is struggling for his life right now, we just pray that you would touch him in a special way, that you would heal his body and that he would make a full recovery from this illness. Father, we lift up his wife Rhonda and his family as they are by his side. We just pray for comfort and peace for each one of them. Father, we lift up his coworkers at this time because we know that they are struggling with coworker being in such bad shape. So, Father, we just lift them all up to you right now and we just pray that you would just provide whatever is needed and that we're going to be able to praise you when this is all done. Father, we just pray that you'd be with us throughout this meeting and guide each one of us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. The first item we have to address is the approval of our agenda. And at this time, I would entertain a motion from council to add item to our agenda, which is citizens to be heard, uh, as item number seven.
Does that move?
Second.
Have a motion in the second to move item citizens to be heard is item seven on our agenda tonight. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next item is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of September the ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our work session meeting of September the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that both sets of minutes, uh, be approved, September the ninth and September twenty-fourth.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion that approval of the minutes for, uh, both A, city council regular meeting of September the ninth and our work session meeting of September the twenty-fourth. Uh, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and again, it is unanimous. Next, uh, item is the mayor's comments. And I would like to begin by saying how great it is to be back at work. I still have several health issues to deal with, but I am optimistic and hopeful that they can be resolved soon. First, I want to thank all of our city employees, citizens, and all organizations that assisted the city on the repairs and cleanup after our third storm since the spring of two thousand twenty-three. Our city has always been very resilient, and this support is what makes the difference. It is a welcoming aid that helps us in getting our city back to some type of normalcy. The city is looking fantastic at this time. James Parker just finished paving four of our streets, and they look great. When you get a chance, make a trip over to Elm Street or either Melville and Star Street, Rudisal and Bonaja, and feel the difference in the ride now. These street improvements were paid through our Pell Bill money, and our hope is to do more paving when funds are available. Mike Steele has started on the Pink Street Repair Project. Unfortunately, we have had to divert school traffic to an alternate route until this project is completed. Mr. Steele informed city manager Dalton and I this past week that he is probably looking at several more weeks to finish this project. The city has started cleaning up the storm debris as well as the annual leaf pickup, and we are asking our citizens to give us ample opportunity and time to get this done. The company that we normally rent an extra leaf truck from has unexpectedly gone out of business. We still have our two city trucks running at this point, but it is always a challenge to keep this equipment on the road without any downtime. This past week, city manager Dalton and I took a tour of the new gym. Construction is still going on. The scoreboard has been installed as well as power to the building. The air must run for fourteen days before starting to put down the hardwood floors. The parking lot has been paved and striped, and the playground area has been graded, and preparation to this area has begun also. This project is nearing completion and will be a major attraction for our city and our citizens. Scaryville is scheduled for this Friday night, and we are expecting a crowd of over six thousand that have indicated they will attend, and this is through our online survey. The city will be closing the streets from Mountain and Main for a more efficient and safer event. And this concludes the mayor's comments at this time. We'll move on to item seven now, which is citizens to be heard. Now, any citizen that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and remember, comments will be strictly held to three minutes per person. And I only have, uh, one citizen that has signed up to speak at this time. And so, uh, I would ask that Mr. John Rudisal, if you'll come forward, and anyone else will give you a chance later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin my comment saying it certainly is good to see you back with us.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, glad to have you back. Um, our company is a receipt of a letter from, uh, Mr. Dalton, uh, thanking us for our years of service and, uh, stating that we'll be making a transition to another company called Visual Edge IT. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are. Um, the, uh, question of my comments basically. Our company was founded in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, we have, we were at that time, uh, could have moved to a larger city. We chose to keep our business here in Cherryville, home of Carolina Craig, where my partners and I worked over twenty years. We have provided contract services for the city since July first, two thousand and four, and have worked with the city through a number of difficult times and situations, always working as much as possible as part of the city. I cannot honestly recall ever having received a letter or a verbal complaint from any city department concerning our services. To the contrary, every department we have worked with has been very complimentary of the services we have provided. Our contract states that we charge one and a half to two times the normal hourly rate for services provided outside of our own business hours on holidays and on weekends. We've often provided services at those times in an attempt to avoid interrupting normal city operations. Although applicable, in an effort to assist the city with maintaining their established budget, we have never charged this additional amount for services rendered outside of normal hours. All that being said, September twenty-fourth, we received a letter from Mr. Dalton thanking us for our services and stating in the next couple of months, we will transition to Visual Edge IT again, some might not know who they are, and list the gentleman's name and ask for us to work with him in making this transition. This company is located in Monroe. Obviously, we're located right down here on Main Street. We are not aware that the city had any or any of its departments were dissatisfied with our services as we have never received any complaints, either verbal or written. It's interesting, this company out of Monroe apparently knows very little about the city of Cherryville and the various, or the various departments in the city, as we, Phoenix Corporate Services, are being asked to train them on the city's departments and operations. Questions to follow. Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever not met the city's requirements for services? The answer to that is a resounding no. Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever not responded to the city's needs in a timely manner? No, I dare say we can and will respond quicker than any company out of southeast Charlotte. Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever once provided services? Has Phoenix Corporate Services ever once not provided services we have requested or required? The answer to that is no. Question here is, were all the departments in the city contacted and asked for input as it related to our services before this decision was made to go with a company located in Monroe, Monroe? I don't know the direct answer, but I dare say to hazard a guess, the answer to that was no. Were members of city council consulted for input as it relates to the services provided by Phoenix Corporate Services before the decision was made to go with the company in Monroe? Again, I don't know the answer to that, but my guess is you were not. If there were any deficiencies in our services, why were we not approached by the city manager or anyone else in the city with these concerns prior to an alternate service provider being employed? Again, I dare say we were not approached concerning deficiencies because in all honesty, there were none. Our request and any written complaint received from any of the partners be refused if we have never seen any such documentation. Why was the request for pricing proposals for information technology services not posted on the city's website or announced to the general public for bid submission? Having provided information technology service to the city for well over twenty years, one would have thought that common courtesy and decency would have dictated that we be approached concerning this matter prior to it occurring, which we were not. Yes, I have some questions. I have multiple questions. Have you questioned and received from information technology services? If so, I think the sunshine laws being in effect, uh, where we, we should be able to see those proposals and access to, uh, that and be viewed by the public. It was my understanding and thought that the city of Cherryville would do business whenever possible with local businesses. That being said, why was the local business, Phoenix Corporate Services, who has been providing services to the city for well over twenty years and that is located within two city blocks of City Hall overlooked in Louisville, a company whose nearest office is located on the other side of Charlotte and Monroe? Finally, will this new company out of Monroe be opening an office in downtown Cherryville and staffing that office with at least as many members as are currently employed by Phoenix Corporate Services? It should be noted that Cherryville police officers often stop by our offices for assistance if they're having issues with their in-vehicle computer equipment or systems. Any delay in services provided by a company located on the other side of Charlotte and Monroe could have a direct impact on public safety, which does not appear to have been taken into consideration. In conclusion, as per the signed contracts still in effect between the city and Phoenix Corporate Services, I'm assuming the city will honor their legal obligation and pay out the remaining nine months of their new contract if their intent is to employ another service provider. All that being said, the really burning question is, who's really behind this change? And what reason is that person doing this? It's obviously not due to the lack of services Phoenix Corporate Services has provided to the city and its department or our responsiveness to those needs and requirements for the past twenty years. Otherwise, we would not have remained under contract with the city for over twenty years. I conclude my remarks, and we'd like to have response.
Thank you, Mr. Rudisal. Uh, in response, uh, there's a lot of questions that were brought up at one time. I'm not completely aware of the situation. I can only say that, uh, this council doesn't make a lot of the decisions that are made in the city. That's why we have a city manager, is for him to make the, uh, correct assessment, the, uh, correct answers, uh, to employment that goes on. And so, uh, I don't, I don't have an answer right off for your questions. I think we could address them once you've brought that to our attention, that, uh, maybe you need to just set up a meeting with our city manager and, and discuss any concerns that you have, and, uh, hopefully, uh, something can be resolved then.
We kind, we kind of thought we might have been approached on that prior, yes, first city manager.
Okay.
Mayor of council, I'll say, you know, this has been going on for a long time that we've been looking at some of the issues we're having, and a lot of it is, and I, I agree with you, we do need to sit down and probably have a better face-to-face meetings. But a lot of this comes down to, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not the, the, the best at the technology stuff by any means, but a lot of it comes down to, we are, we have suffered a lot of cyber attacks and a lot of our departments. We've had issues with multiple people that's been looking at our, the zip plan, police water, where we've had some issues, that's over a little bit solidly right now. And that's why we're looking at other companies. IT Visual is the same company that all of our copiers and printers are contracted through. So it's, it's a company that we have been doing business with for, I guess, the last two years, like. So that's what we're working at, the IT Services. But I am glad we're sitting down with Mr. Rudisal and with the governor. I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, all right. Thank you, city manager Dalton, and thank you, John, for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, and this is special recognition of the Cherryville High School Power Players. And, uh, we have, uh, our high school athletic director, Matt Powers, and Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager, Emily Winters, who will lead us through this. That's on page twenty-nine in your agenda packets.
We're in the fourth each month of having this, uh, this celebration, uh, with Piedmont Lithium, and we really appreciate their involvement, and we'd really enjoy coming to celebrate our athletes if you guys want. Uh, the first athlete we're going to celebrate today, um, is your Jared Varela. Jared, you'll go stand up there in the front. So obviously, uh, I'm not the soccer coach. Uh, Coach Reed is, uh, at work, had an over, an overwork process he had to take care of today, so, uh, he left me with his comments. So, uh, the Piedmont Power Player, uh, is our monthly award to honor athletes that are going above and beyond in their sport. Uh, and so I'm going to read what Coach Reed, uh, has already sent for me. So, uh, this is again, uh, Jared Varela. He is a, uh, multi-sport athlete, but he is currently playing soccer. Uh, he is the goalkeeper and midfielder. Uh, he is a senior this year and will graduate with the class of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, some of the reasons why Jared was chosen for this award is he is a great outstanding, uh, a great outstanding young man with a true understanding of the game of soccer. He takes the initiative to lead the team on and off the pitch, which that's, uh, that is the field. Uh, that's, uh, Coach Reed, the first of the field is the pitch. And, uh, he is selected as one of the captains of the Ironman Soccer Team. Jared is a, a, a four-year player, uh, and Coach Reed writes about him that he's probably one of the best goalkeepers, uh, in the conference. Although the record does not show it, uh, a lot of times Jared ends up being, uh, the, is, or is the last line of defense before, uh, they score. So, uh, I, I don't know what the statistics are, what his numbers are, but I know in a lot of games Jared spends a lot of time, uh, engaged playing because there are a lot of shots taken on goal. He defends the majority of them. There are a lot of really good soccer teams in our conference. You guys know some of the charter schools and bigger schools that we play, uh, and so they are, they are soccer schools, uh, and Jared spends most of his time defending those, uh, those goals force. Uh, one of the last comments that, uh, Coach Reed, uh, wanted to make sure we shared was, uh, Jared never gives up on the field, no matter the outcome. He plays from the start whistle to the end whistle. So this is Cherryville Ironman Soccer Player Jared Varela.
Congratulations, Jared.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jared. Good job.
Congratulations. Good luck in your season.
The soccer team will be in action at home again next Wednesday. If you want to come and cheer on Jared and his classmates, uh, and his teammates, they will be playing, uh, uh, the East Gas and next Wednesday, uh, and that'll be senior night for those guys. Uh, so, so keep that in mind. Before I introduce the next, uh, power player and her coach, uh, I do want to, uh, let you know that our, our fall schedule is winding down. This will be the last full month, uh, that we'll have fall schedule. So you have one more football game, which actually is going to be November the first, one more, uh, home football game on the schedule, uh, two soccer games. That's the next two Wednesdays. Uh, volleyball plays at home for their last home game tomorrow before they start the conference tournament and possible, uh, state playoffs. And then, um, we'll be rolling into the basketball season and wrestling season, uh, as we move into November. So I'm excited to have you out. I know, uh, many of you come into the games. I see you, uh, feel free to, uh, stop in and say hello, listeners, if you're there. Uh, we appreciate all of us that come and support our athletes. The last athlete we're going to celebrate today, I'm going to call her coach up first, uh, is a, uh, female cross-country athlete, uh, and Miss Callie Cook will come and introduce her.
Uh, so my name is Callie Cook, and Antonia Graves coaches alongside with me. Uh, we're the cross-country coaches. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Cameron. Uh, Cameron is a junior right now, um, at Cherryville High School, and she, this is her third year on the cross-country team, and she, it will be her third year on the track team. And then she's actually, um, taken dance lessons for thirteen years, so she's very athletic. Um, so she is one of our top runners for cross-country and track. She generally runs the four-by-four, four-by-one, four-hundred-meter, eight-hundred-meter. I know that's a lot of numbers, but she's really fast. And, um, so my paper says to list three reasons why this athlete should receive this award. So this is the order that I put them. Um, number one, Cameron is a terrific runner in cross-country. Um, she came in seventh place this year in our pre-conference run and tenth place in this year's Gaston County Meet. And, um, And, um, hopefully she'll do really well tomorrow. We have our conference meet and then regionals at the end of October. Um, I've also been really proud of her and her leadership because she's only used to a team of three, and we recruited a lot this year, so we have twenty-one players. And, uh, she has really stepped up on her leadership role to help me out. Um, number two, uh, academically, Cameron has a four-point-seven GPA. She's in the top five at least, I know, right now. She's a wonderful student. She challenges herself with rigorous courses such as AP and college classes. Um, also, beyond, um, sports, she's a leader in the ballet club and getting that started, um, at school. And she's just established a new club called CHS Go, which encourages other students to get involved outdoors in walking, running, and hiking. And that club was her idea. Um, but my third, uh, foremost, uh, thing about Cameron is she's just an all-around wonderful, wonderful kid. Um, she's a wonderful person, and I have been so proud to get to know her through our season this year. She's willing to do anything I ask of her, and I've asked her a lot this year because I'm new to the, the sport. Um, but she pushes herself out of her comfort zone, um, in the process of anything I ask. Everything she does, she does in excellence, and she has the sweetest demeanor all the time, and her smile is contagious. So I'm very honored to recognize her for this award.
Congratulations, Danielle.
Thank you, thank you. Come on and grew up in.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I love your whole family. We just love your whole family.
Thank you. I know. I live in my bed Friday night, and I clap my hands.
Yes, thank you so much. I love you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Um, I'm a great job. Good to see you.
I want to thank Cherryville High School Athletic Director, uh, Matt Powers, as well as Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager Emily Winters for bringing these students before us. It's such a pleasure, uh, to see, uh, what's going on in our schools. And we're so glad to have you here, so you can see a little bit about our government, and we'll welcome you back anytime. Thank you. And while we're doing special recognitions, uh, at this time, I wanna move to item nine, which is special employee recognition for years of service, and I see that, uh, Clarence Bowers is here. If you'd come forward, please.
You getting over there?
Yeah. I didn't know whether you'd recognize Clarence.
I didn't either. I thought that's not his name.
Called you noodles.
This is, uh, one of our employees. Now, he, you just moved from street, uh, from uptown, working with David Day, and where, where you were going at?
I'm Rick.
You went to Park and Rec, okay? This certificate is awarded to Clarence Bowers in recognition of five years of service to the city of Cherryville, and it's signed by City Manager Brian Dalton and Mayor H.L.B. Congratulations, Clarence Noodles. Okay, he's, let's turn him to his wife. Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, man.
Congratulations.
Thank you. May the law keep us good.
Oh, yeah. We appreciate you so much. Congratulations.
We appreciate it.
We're gonna miss you on Main Street. I know they're gonna miss you on Main Street.
I know. Yeah. He used to be the first thing I greeted every morning when I'd go into work. He'd be out there already working. Okay, we'll move on to item ten, and this is consideration of budget amendments, and, uh, our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that, and that's gonna be pages thirty-one and thirty-two in your agenda packets.
Yes, Mayor Council, the first one that you'll remember, we were awarded, uh, one million six hundred fifty thousand dollars for water and sewer improvements. Uh, and we were originally awarded that, uh, grant, the administrative cost that were gonna go to DEQ was fifty thousand dollars. But the state legislators have changed that where DEQ only gets about twenty-five. So we have to redo the, uh, budget ordinance resolution. We're starting to submit payments now. We've, uh, completed Keystone Pump Station. So when we went to submit that, they told me you needed to do another resolution, uh, for this, this grant proposal. So this is just, it's still the same amount, but it's just, we, we get to keep twenty-five thousand dollars more than we would originally have to pay in administrative costs. So we need that one passed, and the other one is a budget amendment, and it's related to the Keystone Pump Station. We had already paid some funds out of our money, out of Water and Sewer Fund to start Keystone Projects, and we'll reimburse from the grant once we get that back. And then the other part of it is the twenty-five thousand extra that we get to keep that comes up to the eighty-nine thousand.
Have any questions from any, uh, council member for, uh, City Manager Brian Dalton? And concerns for the budget amendments?
Let, let me just ask one quick thing. The twenty-five thousand, Brian, uh, are you anticipating that the project may require spending some of that twenty-five thousand?
More, yeah, we'll end up spending the entire, my, yes, sir. Uh, so now, instead of having one million six hundred thousand to spend, we're gonna have one million six hundred twenty thousand.
Okay.
So we'll figure something out as far as improvements to spend. Like I said, the only one that we've completed so far, we've submitted proposals to DEQ and had all of them approved, but the only one that we've actually completed right now is the Keystone Pump Station.
Okay, okay.
Uh, any other questions from any council member? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the budget amendments as they were presented at this time.
Make a motion that we adopt the amendments as presented.
Second, have a motion in the second to adopt the budget amendments as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Okay, we'll move to item eleven, which is consideration of the resolution in reference to our local water supply plan. And again, our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that, and that's pages thirty-three through thirty-nine in your agenda packets.
Yes, Mayor Council, if you see there on page thirty-four, you can see the letter that we did receive from DEQ. And what this is, is this is a requirement every five years, we have to submit the water plan, basically. And it's, if you go through there and look, it's basically everything about our water plant and, and everything that happens. Uh, so this gets submitted every five years, and I'll have to say, uh, Brian Williams did a great job with this. Uh, when he went to submit it, you have to get somebody that is actually certified and, and on the list to submit this, this plan to DEQ. And the first company had went from charging five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, to compile this report. Uh, Brian reached out and found someone that was also qualified, that, uh, works with us a lot at the water plant, and he submitted a report for, for the five thousand dollars. Uh, so the report has been accepted, and you can see there in the letter, if they just need the, the governing body to adopt the resolution supporting the report.
Okay. Do I have any, uh, council member with any questions on the, uh, resolution considering our local water supply? And this has to be done within five years, but it can be done sooner?
It's done every five.
Oh, it's automatically delivered five years? Okay, and that's through DEQ. Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's, it's, it's pretty extensive. I was reading.
Yeah, it is.
There's a lot of detail.
A lot of questions.
I didn't know there was two kinds of concrete. I don't, I still don't understand what it is.
Yeah, I don't understand a lot of them they come up with on these reports, but, um, obviously it, it monitors everything and, you know, what our samples are and what the readings are.
That's, that's what we got Brian Williams for.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Decipher all those questions. There's a ton of them, too.
I know.
There sure is.
Same to many.
Okay, if, uh, there's not any questions, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
I make the motion to approve this resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the, approve the resolution as presented. A motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and there is none. It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item twelve. And this is consideration of annexation ordinance in regards to Dollar Tree at twenty-three oh one Lincoln Highway. That's GIS parcel number three-one-two-five-nine-zero. We have our planning and zoning director, Richard Ehlum, here, who will lead us through that, and that's pages forty through fifty-one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since our last city council meeting, the parcel was advertised in the evening section of the Lincoln Heights News, giving notice of tonight's public hearing on Tuesday, October the first. It only happened to be on, uh, one time.
Richard, excuse me a second. I did not put public hearing on there, spelled it out, but it is a public hearing, so we need a motion to go into a public hearing.
Oh, I see it wasn't on there.
We go to public here.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into public hearing at this time. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Thank you, page. Okay, we are considered in, uh, public hearing?
Of course, yes, sir. Also, the notice of tonight's public hearing were mailed to all adjacent property owners. So if you didn't want to, just, kind of thing, I could be rich to all of us. So I'll go through the, uh, about the same thing we went with the last meeting, so the general, and it was going on. So on Wednesday, September before with the owner of twenty-three oh one Lincoln Highway, parcel ID number three-one-two-five-nine-zero, applied for voluntary annexation of this property. Page forty in your agenda is the petition checklist to start the process of the voluntary annexation. The parcel is contain- contiguous to the city limits of Ace Hardware, which is directly west of this parcel. The indicated pages forty-one through forty-four is the voluntary annexation permission. It is signed by the property owner and also by City of Cherrville's Paige Green. Just wanted to mention also tonight, we have representing property owner, Mr. Larry Bearden. He's with, he's one that started this, the whole process back in, I think, October, November last year, and he's, he's still on it, working it up through now. Pages forty-five to forty-six is a copy of the North Carolina Jail warning TV. Page forty-seven is a copy of the map from yesterday, and GIS showing the parcel is outlined in red and it's highlighted in yellow. It shows you that's the parcel that needs to be annexed into the city limits. Page forty-eight is just an additional map that I've painted yesterday, and GIS showing that the parcel belongs to Piedmont Companies. Page forty-nine is just another inscription of the parcel. And last, page fifty, fifty-one is the ordinance that the city council has to bring to have this parcel annexed as part of the Cherrville city limits.
Okay, do I have any questions from any council member for, uh, planning and zoning director Ehlum?
The Piedmont Companies, that's, they are not connected in any way with the Piedmont Lithium. That's totally separate. Okay.
Hey, any other questions?
I have.
Okay, um, do I need to read that, uh, now therefore it be ordained by the city council if we vote? First of all, I would, uh, uh, ask that if there's any citizen that would like to speak concerning this, since we're still in public hearings. Any citizen that would like to speak concerning this? If not, then I have a motion to exit public hearing at this time?
Make a motion to exit public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds to exit public hearing at this time. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. We are out of public hearing at this time. We're open for discussion. Um, do I need to read the, uh, after we vote?
I think, Mayor, it's part of the public record, this, the whole ordinance, but.
Yeah.
Okay, which, which is page fifty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't.
You don't have to read all of them.
Okay. No, it's just, uh, where the actions taken.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if I have no other questions, uh, I would entertain a, a motion to either vote for or against the ordinance to annex, uh, this parcel into the city limits.
Make a motion, go ahead. Vote for annexing this parcel into the city limits.
Okay, and we do emphasize it is a voluntary annexation, okay?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to vote for the ordinance to annex, uh, this parcel into the city limits. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. There is none. It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item thirteen. This is other business. Uh, do I have anything from council that they would like to bring, uh, for the citizens tonight under other business?
I, I, I just, I, I should know the answer to this, but I don't now that we're talking about annexations. The, uh, the property where Walmart is, it's inside the city. Does it go all the way up where Scooters is? Is all that inside, all the way to one-fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
All of that's in the city? That's all I need, that's the question I had.
Mm-hmm.
Old Kaiser Chevrolet is not in.
The old Kaiser Chevrolet is not in the city.
The intersection at, in front of, not in the city.
Top right there.
So, like, the whole, that entire intersection is outside of the city.
Okay, now, now, now come, say that one more time.
Well, the big char, uh, big section.
Main intersection, that is not inside the city. City limit stops right in front of, uh, about Ace Hardware, uh, prior to the new Dollar Tree, and nothing on, uh, nothing on Highway one fifty is inside the city. It's all way past.
One more sense of. One more sense of. One fifty is not.
Or the right side of the road is outside.
I think it's easier to explain where Home and Grocery used to be if there it is.
Oh, but, uh, but you, but we, you have jurisdiction at one-fifty? I mean, you have jurisdiction, police have jurisdiction on all the streets, and do they not? One, one mile.
Highway patrol ones on the rest, or nice hardware to, uh.
Yeah, I understand that that, that, that property's not in the city, but.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Janice, we're quiet.
I got a couple of things. I just wanna make sure you got on your to-do list.
Go ahead.
One is, uh, that striping on that parking lot at Depot.
Yes, we are working on that. Our, one of our contractors that we're trying to get to look at that, he is, been working in a math a lot.
I'm sure. That's what I'm saying. I, just put it on your to-do list, make sure it's on there when all this gets taken care of. And another one that.
Explain where that is.
Yeah.
Depot parking lot.
Where we put the new sign up, that parking lot.
Right there.
In front of the depot.
Main Street, front of the depot, across from Bean Construction.
Oh, oh, okay.
Candy markets to be.
Okay, I was looking down at the, where we've worked on the road.
It's a nice parking lot, but it's a mess on football, right?
It's, it's.
Yeah, okay. Because they don't know where to park.
Okay.
The other, uh, is, we really need to get some mulch at, uh, Rotary Park.
Yes, we're looking at, hopefully, what we're wanting to do is football's there and over at Ram Bar. Uh, when we get them in there, install them with pickleball, we're, we're gonna try to launch all of that and get mulch at both of our main playgrounds.
Yeah.
And we're gonna put them.
There's some vandalism there. Someone went in and left a bunch of trash, and they smeared mud or a lot of the implements there.
On Rotary Park?
Yeah. So it needs some attention, and y'all get a chance.
Okay.
And we're gonna put mulch at the gym, too, aren't we, only?
Uh, actually, you know, talking about the gym, I actually meant with the. Uh, actually, you know, talking about the gym, I actually met with a contractor today to look at, uh, building a sign. I've been working with the Summer Family. They picked out one that they like, and, uh, we're looking at, you know, build two brick columns with the same brick that's at the gym. And, you know, attach the sign there. So if you pull into the gym and you go about halfway, there's two areas there, and you'll see that it's gonna be natural areas.
For it wide and sound.
That's what we're looking at, builds this up, right there.
Okay, while we're talking about signs, are we anywhere toward getting the one replaced down at Daleburgers Park?
Daleburgers Park, yes, we do need a sign down there.
Yeah, it's not there, but that
We had talked to Mr. Lael about that a file back, but I'm not, guys.
Right, just add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from council?
Sure.
Okay, if not, from staff? You have anything from staff under other business?
Um, talking about the gym, we, we still made some more progress today. They, they hung the, the basketball goal, started hanging the end of the day, so it is coming. Hopefully, uh, like I said, we're probably going about three, four days now to power, so it's about twelve more days maybe. We'll hopefully start the hardware chores and, uh, starting to get to the end here at the gym, just kind of.
I was amazed at the, the lights inside that gym. They go off automatically if no one's in there. And they come on, and I thought, well, that's gonna burn them out faster, but it, they got sensors on there. And it's, uh, I think it's a restriction through, is, uh, Rusty could probably answer that. Is that a restriction when you put power in now? Uh, yeah, it's one of the codes, so they have to do that. Yeah, but that's odd if you're standing in the gym, there's only two or three, it's me and Brian and a couple workers, and the lights kept going off, and we said, oh, no. We just put these lights in and they're shorting out, but that wasn't the case. It's just because we weren't in that area of the gym.
Once you get more people, I'll come on and they come on, they're a lot brighter. But it will be a little dimmer as well when people are not in certain areas.
Okay.
John, will, will you describe what kind of fence that you're gonna use next to the residential?
Uh, I've talked to the residents, and I've, uh, got some contractors give the price, and we're looking to put another solid wood fence that will be painted.
Very good.
And it's on both sides.
Very good.
But now, as the, uh, playground equipment, it will be a metal?
Playground?
Black.
Playground, uh, if you turn into the parking lot, the playground will be right there on your left-hand side, and we'll put a black chain link to the ground there.
Right behind Michael Dullinger's house, right there. That's where the playground will be. And it is gonna be called the Larry and Carolyn Summer Recreation Complex. Okay.
So the residents are okay with the, with the fence and how high it's gonna be and all that? Michael's good and, okay, good. All right, good. Good.
Great.
You know, we've had a couple of conversations.
Yes, we have.
Ready to start on the fence, but we have to wait till they take the silk fence, and they have to set a little bit more grading, you know? Specifically on the right side of the road, uh, at the parking lot there. That, that bank will get cut out a little bit more before we can do that and sort of
And we'll have grass from there all the way down to the gym, uh, along the, uh, wooden fence.
Yes. And, you know, the side, uh, on the right-hand side, go down and then it'll, it'll turn towards the house, the old house, you have there.
Mm-hmm.
That way that neighbor gets privacy, and they don't buy pictures of themselves there at all.
This gonna be a beautiful facility.
Turned out nice.
Okay. Okay, anything else from staff?
No.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second for adjournment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. We are at dinner. You're supposed to talk to the people.
I'll be too, later.
It's scary, man. We're hearing them. Uh, do, do the, hold on there. If you're, and, uh, if you're at the cherry pit and you're looking out that window, and you're looking over at the, the museums, there's a big white area that looks like making this window.